Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Cindy, the speaker clerk, to read the statement of compliance of the Open Public Meetings Act into the record, please.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act with the notice provided to the Trenton Times, the Hunter County Democrat, department heads, and the Press Service. The meeting agenda provides for all actual items shared with final publication and is subject to change. This meeting is being streamed live and recorded using the Zoom meeting platform.
Number one, please.
Councilwoman Rainbow.
Here.
Councilman Sanders.
Here.
Councilman Segman.
Here.
Council President Taylor.
Here.
Mayor No.
Here. Right, if everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remains standing for a moment of silence in commemoration of Hurricane Ida. Legend.
America.
Under God.
With liberty and justice.
This is wrong.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, today is the one year anniversary of Hurricane Ida passed through our city beginning just about a year ago this evening about this time. And it's been on my mind most of the day and all year, in fact. And it's important to take a few minutes to recognize this and to allow counsel to speak and to have some thoughts from some of our leaders here at the state as well. So I'm actually going to start with some letters, so a little bit out of order here on the agenda. We did receive some letters from various elected officials and I'd like to share those with you. And these letters will be posted to the windows here in the Manhattan Building. We will have a month-long exhibit called Remembering Ida. We're encouraging public members of the public to bring in photographs, drawings, you know, writings to put on the windows. We've got a few things out there. I've got a few things in my bag, which I'll put up tonight after the meeting. And these letters from our elected leaders will be part of the exhibit. And I'm just going to read through them until it takes a couple of minutes. The first letter is from Assemblyman Anthony Varelli. Dear Lambertville neighbors, on this first anniversary of Hurricane Ida's destruction of this vibrant river town, many of you are looking both at the road behind you and the long road of recovery ahead. When a disaster of this proportion strikes, there is an immediate focus and response from the wider world, but that attention often dwindles and those most affected are left to bear the economic costs and the emotional scars alone. I'm ready to say that you are not alone and are not forgotten. The monumental task of rebuilding your community and strengthening its resiliency for the future is a years-long process that no community should have to shoulder alone. The strength, resiliency, and community that every one of you has shown is testament to what it means to be a Lambertville resident. I'm proud to represent this town. Just like the river you call home, you give your community so much that the least we can do is make sure that we continue to do everything we can to help heal this physical devastation and emotional trauma of this disaster. My office is here today, tomorrow, and beyond to support this community as it rebuilds. The work of healing and recovery is not done, and I lend my support as an assemblyman and as a neighbor to everyone still in need of assistance. Sincerely, Anthony Asfari, Assemblyman. Second letter is from our Senator Shirley K. Turner. And it reads, "To the Lambertville community, I visited Lambertville multiple times in the aftermath of Hurricane Ida to survey the damage and to aid your mayor and city leaders. It was with shock and sadness that I toured neighborhoods impacted by the storm and listened to accounts of residents who were trapped by walls of water with little or no warning. When the water receded, some residents expressed an unwillingness to relocate while others feared they could never return. Whether you chose to stay and rebuild or know of others who chose to leave everything behind, starting over is always difficult. As we approach the one-year anniversary, I join my voice with those who celebrate your spirit of community and resilience. From local businesses providing free food for FEMA agents, to neighbors helping neighbors find items of sentimental value among the ruins, to leaders advocating for better protections for their residents, you have demonstrated the grit and beauty that makes Lambertville a gem of 100 counties. You may live in a changing world, but one thing that will never change is our faith in each other and our hope for a brighter future. I remain your proud and faithful senator. Sincerely, Shirley K. Turner." This from Senator Booker. A year ago, Hurricane Ida caused historic flooding and rainfall that took the lives of 30 New Jerseyans, destroyed homes, stalled our transportation networks, and devastated communities across New Jersey. In the aftermath of the storm, I visited communities around New Jersey, spoke to residents engaged with all levels of government, from mayors to President Biden, to secure resources for New Jersey. The support from the Biden administration in New Jersey continues. Counties received disaster declarations to unlock critical funding for our state. In climate, I worked quickly to pass disaster relief supplemental funding to help New Jerseyans get back on their feet. As New Jerseyans have always done following natural disasters, residents banded together last year, lending a helping hand and representing the spirit of Jersey strong in the face of tragedy. Though the damage will take years to repair, these resources and ongoing support are helping families and communities recover. Importantly, as these storms become more frequently, we must continue our efforts to strengthen New Jersey's resiliency in the face of future climate events. This way, we will not only rebuild after these destructive storms, but come out stronger than before. Wishing you well, Senator Cory Booker." And lastly, from the governor. Dear Lambertville residents, on behalf of the state of New Jersey, I extend greetings to all those who gathered to honor and remember the anniversary of Hurricane Ida. One year ago, our state and nation faced deadly destructive category four Atlantic hurricane that tested the resolve of our society. Hurricane Ida became the second most damaging and intense hurricane to make landfall since Hurricane Katrina, 2005. Later causing catastrophic tropical storm Ida and impacting New Jersey on September 1st, 2021, this tragic event caused a total of 30 known fatalities. Today's exhibit, Remembering Ida, serves as a brilliant opportunity to reflect on the struggles of that day and to recognize the resilience of Lambertville's residents as the remnants of Ida continue to impact scores of families and local businesses. I join everyone in attendance in commemorating our heroes and demonstrating the strength, determination, and patriotism that defines us as New Jerseyans. My thoughts and prayers are with every family and community mourning a loved one and all those who remain missing. As your governor, I thank all those who gathered to honor and remember this tragic event in our state history. My very best, Philip D. Murphy, Governor." Now, I'd like to ask the council if they have any thoughts or reflections that they'd like to share.
I guess.
It's usually ladies first, but they're not here.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate you reading those. The record, appreciate their comments. I moved here in 1999 and have been serving on council for 15 years now. So I was thinking about Ida, I was also thinking about the storms in 2004, 2005, 2006. And San was 2011, 12. Collectively, they all really hit the city. And it reminded me a little bit of the reaction of the community to that reminded me a little bit of my childhood. I grew up in rural Lancaster County, and as I looked out for my house, all I could see was farms, mostly men and women's farms. And they have this tradition that if somebody's barn burns down, they have farmers, they'll all come together. It's very hard to build a barn as a solo person or a family, but they would come together, they'd come together and build for somebody. And, you know, one of the things that struck me about all the weather events that we've had here is that shared sense of responsibility that people have towards each other. You know, it's called a silver lining maybe, but it's, you know, watching people come together has been so amazing and uplifting. You know, the responses to this are through government, through FEMA, through the federal government, through the state government, through the city government, but it's really also community organizations like the food banks that were very active here elsewhere. But that sense of community, neighbors helping neighbor really was a third part of that story, which is government, community organizations. You know, but even though there's that silver lining, that, you know, I just, I can't help but think about the scars that it does leave, you know, as I walk, ride my bike down towards Union Street, see, you know, where the buildings were, apartments. Realize that this impacts people differently. Those that are most vulnerable or financially vulnerable are often the most devastated. So I can hope that this will never happen again, but having lived through, you know, five of these while I've lived in this town and with climate change, you know, it's inevitable that something's going to happen again. So just thinking about responsibilities, you know, and for this and future councils, I think we have an imperative to try to improve our resiliency, which I believe that we keep working on and doing, to learn, to learn from those events. You know, we've gotten a lot better at responding to these, you know, under, you know, first like the idea of using Facebook to put, you know, messages out. We've gotten better and better, I think, at responding to these challenges, but we need to learn from each of the mistakes that we've made so that we can communicate and respond better. I also think of the three, the four, housing, especially the little departments wiped out this housing in general. It's a dire need for this city. And then also sort of sustainable practices that, you know, a small part, but we do what we can as a community, have some things we agenda tonight to address climate change. So I appreciate that. Last, I just want to say that I read those letters, but yeah, it's very heartening to see the governor here, Senator Booker, the members of the fight 15th, or all three of them are here and appreciate them coming and all the work they've done, had some pre-orders that were down here. So I appreciate all those elected officials that came to bear witness and also help us out with our struggles. I consider we appreciate that.
How about Council President Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, everybody, I apologize for not being there in person tonight. And I also want to apologize if it sounds like I'm reading, it's because I am. I'm having an allergic reaction to something and the medication is making it such that I probably shouldn't try to speak off the cuff right now. So thank you to all of my colleagues on council. Thank you to all the elected officials and other government representatives and social service providers who assisted and continue to assist our city. And especially thank you to all the residents and non-residents who volunteered their time and resources to kickstart recovery the minute the storm ended. As I think back to what we collectively and what so many families and individuals went through a year ago, what stands out most to me is the way that we as a community came together to identify and meet needs, to creatively find and distribute resources, and to begin thinking about how we can mitigate the future risks that are inherent when facing climate change and living in a regional bowl as we do. I have continued to be moved by the generosity and resilience of our community. At the same time, not a day has gone by in the past year when I have not been thinking about and empathizing with the, our neighbors who've had to rebuild or relocate and those who are still recovering. And I know that those are, those are many. The city overall and I individually are committed to continuing resilience and mitigation planning, some of which is really starting in earnest at this point, to seeking all resources and assistance that's available to us and to engaging the community in developing effective ways to protect each other and to ensure the continued vitality of our city for the long term. While I will be moving on from council this year, at the end of this year, I will continue to put my background as a city planner and as a grant writer and fundraiser to use on behalf of Lambertville in whatever ways that I can. So Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. This is an emotional time and, but I think that there are silver linings that we've all discussed in terms of the way that, that we collectively and regionally supported each other, and that's what I hope we can continue to build on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Segman? Okay, Councilwoman Laverne?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak to members of the public and for reading those very kind letters from our elected officials. I'd also like to thank Councilman Sanders and Council President Taylor for their comments, which are very heartfelt and very well spoken. When I think about one year ago today, I, I can't help feeling, we've talked about the silver lining, I can't help feeling that at one of our lowest, one of the lowest moments in our city's history is also one that could make us probably the most proud to be residents of this community. We had people, neighbors, coming together. We had elected officials coming in, council members, city operations, the clerk, office of emergency management, first responders, fire companies, the rescue squad responded to so many calls and saved lives. And that's no small feat to have undergone what we, what we went through a year ago without a single loss of life is really remarkable. And we, we got hit really hard, but I think it did bring us together as a community, and it's the reason we all stay here, because we recognize that in ourselves. I, again, I just want to thank everyone that participated, rolled up their sleeves, put on their, their wellies and mucked out basements, you know, helped pull furniture and trash and help organize. We had help from county officials with, you know, support resources. And with regard to those individuals that lost everything and Councilman Sanders, you mentioned, the little departments, I think about those people all the time. And I don't know if anyone's listening, but they are, those individuals, why they've been forced to relocate, sadly been forced to relocate, they are not forgotten. And I will say, in fact, there is one individual who I was friendly with, who, as a result of the trauma, a few weeks after Ida passed away tragically. And I think about her a lot. She lived in village apartments, she left two children. And there are just so many stories of heartache and loss. We have not forgotten, we cannot forget. And we need to think about, we need to keep this conversation about affordable housing going. I know this council takes it seriously, and I'm proud to be a member of a council that feels that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And acknowledging what the letters you have received from our elected officials and comments by Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Lambert, and, sorry, and Councilman Sanders. It was an incredibly devastating day, followed by weeks of additional devastating visuals. And the one that'll stay burned in my mind is when I came downtown, I went to the top of North Union Street and got my camera out and just panned all of the debris that was located along the sidewalks in the Cherry Street Park, knowing that for every, for everything on that pile represented the losses of people in the city. And I was proud to do what I could do, working with the mayor and council and, and post, and current mayor in, and council president really stepped up as a believable job. And look forward to making sure that when we do develop in the city, that we go that extra step in requiring stronger storm water management in any project going forward. We've made a lot of progress in the repairs, thanks to your leadership. Thank you very much. And we've all seen pictures of the mayor showing us the devastation of major drainage infrastructure that failed when we needed it the most. So I look forward to working with the mayor and council on making sure that when we build, again, we build smarter and more resilient. And it was very tough to see, you know, living where I live on a hill and not too far from Councilwoman Lambert. Sometimes we feel, I feel isolated up there. But just to come down into the city and see, look at all the videos that were posted by people as they were losing their houses and cars floating by, and people helping people was, was, is, I think, what we, in a weird way, expect to happen in a community such as ours. Doesn't matter if it's not political, whether you're a party in power or a party in the city or, or, you know, political organizations, people from many different walks of life and political affiliations came down and said, what can we do? And, you know, the counties stepped forward in, in so many ways to assist us, and their help and assistance, it did not go unnoticed by anyone that assisted on the council and of course, the mayor as well, and, and the people who were most affected. So and just to end with saying something that Councilwoman Lambert, a woman Lambert said was that, that that's why we all love living here. So once again, let's, let's plan on moving progressively forward and again, making our city more resilient for future events.
I got up this morning and I couldn't decide if it was a momentous day or not. It definitely had moments of where it was kind of tinged and poignancy. And I, and I think about the, my day today and how it ties into the last 364 days. It was remarkable in a lot of ways. You know, I spent a couple of quiet moments down at Alzo Creek this morning. I spent some quiet moments out at Swan Creek. I talked to some residents from different parts of town who are still struggling. Just before I came here, I was at the far end of North Union Street where residents had petitioned the city to close off the street, and they were all gathered in a big circle, drinking glasses of wine, eating mud cupcakes, right? So there was some jokes about making cupcakes out of mud. And I talked to a couple who, this evening, who've been in their house on North Union Street for 30 years, and they still don't have a kitchen a year later. They've been kind of camping out in their house. And they really, in some ways, are remarkable examples of the Lambertvilleans I've come to love and to cherish, people who were committed to their neighborhood, committed to the city, committed to their house, were not going to flee, and were, were patient and working toward rebuilding. So, you know, I'm very mindful of that today, and feels like we're going to have a momentous evening here with the, with the amount of work that we are able to move forward tonight. A year later, it's strictly coincidence that we're able to have this agenda tonight where we're able to move forward hopefully on funding these massive projects that I'm eager to get underway. And, you know, one of the things, this Hurricane Ida has been with me every single day. To Council, Council President Taylor's point, there's not been a single day when it hasn't been a part of my life. And, you know, the, and it's been fine because it's important to do the work and it's important to, it's important because of the gratitude I feel for the community, right? You know, you do this, you work, you work hard at your jobs and, and it's because you love where you live. And that's kind of good for me. I've just been completely filled with gratitude again and again and again for the resilience of our people, for the people on Cottage Hill and Cankown. You know, and the stories I've heard from people, it doesn't matter if you're in Cottage Hill, you're down there mucking out basements with everybody else, right? So that's, it's really just remarkable. So, you know, it felt like a significant day to me in some ways, and in other days it felt like a regular, ordinary day. Neighbors were down North Union Street just drinking wine and hanging out, right? And there were some stories to be told, and no doubt there's some, some sad stories that have got replayed tonight, but look at replayed on a beautiful evening that is far, far different cry weather-wise than it was a year ago. And I just want to highlight the work that we have done with the resiliency team. Everybody spoke so eloquently about all of the work that the city did, city officials and emergency officials and neighbors and the county and everybody. And that really got us through. And, you know, one of the things I'm pleased to be doing is working, you know, with the resiliency team here, really planning for the future. We're reading weekly, I could talk about the work that we're doing for half an hour without stopping, and at some point I'll get a lot of information out there, but there's all kinds of grants that we're applying for, projects that we're planning on doing. Mr. Dave Byrd and Judy Gleason have put together an incredible survey that we're going to be distributing in the next week or two, that we really love community input on. So, you know, from, from this tragedy, from this, this terrible event, we're really going to be able to plan better. To your, to your point about making sure future development is, is not just responsible, but it's kind of proactively addressing, you know, potential future, you know, weather events or storm-related events. So it's a lot of work ahead and, you know, I'm very pleased to be working with this council. Very pleased to be working with this, with, with, with the residents who are so, so giving and so lovely. So, you know, that's all I have really to say. I just, I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm glad that we're together. I'm glad the weather's nice and I'm glad that we're able to move forward these projects because I look forward to the fall and being out there with construction crews in my wellies, talking to residents and holding meetings and making sure that everybody's as informed as they can be. You know, I'm here every step of the way. The fall is going to be a major focus for me. The fall is going to be making sure that the people who live on Swan Creek and Eliet Creek and along our roadways are well-informed about what the construction work is going to happen, whether it's holding a weekly meeting here with the engineers or whatever. It's going to be a huge part of my fall. I'm dedicated to the residents of Lambertville as we move forward with this work, and I'm excited to get it done. So with that, I think we'll move on unless anybody else has anything else to say.
Okay, excuse me. I just wanted to remark on the irony that a year ago, we had, what, 11 inches of water in 24 hours, and now we have a drought.
Yes. Yeah. So, yeah, when we talk about climate resilience and resiliency, we're not just talking about floods.
Right.
Talking, you know, we're concerned about people on Cottage Hill who may not have been directly adversely impacted. I know that some families had, had damage up there, but, you know, that had wells on Cottage Hill, right? So, you know, there are all different ways that these climate-related events can impact various neighborhoods and members of the community. So I think you're, I think it's, you're wise to point that out.
And also Cottage Hill as well.
Cottage, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so moving on. Our first resolution tonight is Resolution Number 160-2022. This is the resolution of the city of Lambertville and the county of Pahrumpin, New Jersey, authorizing an emergency appropriation pursuant to NJSA 40A Hole-in-4-49 in the amount of $500,000 to fund watershed protection improvements in an area of Swan Creek, Eliet, Eliet, I'm sorry, in Eliet Creek and Upper York Street. That's just a typo there, looks like. This resolution to, to, to fund, to take, to do an emergency appropriation is largely because we simply didn't, we didn't bond enough money in the spring to cover all of these projects. Some of the projects came in higher than the, than the engineer's estimates, and as everyone knows, we can't award a contract without having sufficient funds to pay for the contract. So this is an emergency authorization that will allow us to proceed with potentially awarding all these contracts, right? There's a couple of any questions about that? We, we, we There's a couple of any questions about that? We, we, we did this in the spring when we had additional work that had to be done on a culvert and we, we hadn't bonded enough. We, you know, the scope of the work changed considerably. So this is something that we've already done once this year and we need to do it again this evening. So are there any questions about that with council?
Could you just kind of review how that plays out with respect to the budget, like where the money is moved from?
It doesn't have any immediate impact on the budget and I'm going to send the bill to jump in here if I say something wrong. We will have to bond for this at some point.
Okay.
More than likely, we, we are allowed to, you would, there's a time period in which we were required to bond. More than likely, we will bond for this in the, in the coming budget year.
Okay.
So, so, you know, as we're, as we're winding down our budget here, we need to be very careful that we're not, we're not spending more than we have. So, you know, it's more than likely that this, this emergency appropriation will be bonded in 20, early 2020.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Somebody willing to make a motion to adopt the resolution numbers 160-2022?
So move.
Second.
So, uh, let's do a, uh, let's do a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lambert? Yes. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stigman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Or no?
Yes. Thank you. Our next resolution is number 153-2022. This is a resolution to award the bids received for the project titled Tropical Storm Ida Restoration Project for Swan Creek, Ely Creek and New York Street to Kyle Conti LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,696,961. And, and just before we, we discuss this, I just wanted to, is Hillary on the call tonight, you know?
We have two participants, oh, actually six. I don't see.
Either way, I just want to give a shout out to Hillary Troutman. Hillary Troutman is a state conservation engine, engineer and a project manager with the USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service. And when I went out in December last year as, as then the presumptive mayor to walk the creeks with the engineers from the USDA, she was designated as our project manager for these projects. And we worked very closely with Hillary. She's been an amazing partner for the city. This is an incredible project and they're very organized, very supportive. And I can't speak highly enough about our ability to work with them and how incredibly responsive they've been to additional needs that we've, that we've kind of addressed as, as the projects have continued. So really a huge shout out to them because I don't know where we would be without this, without their support and without this funding. So I just wanted to give that, give her due there. Are there any questions from the council about this?
It's, um, once this gets completed, is there funding from other government sources?
No. So, so the, the funding, the grant for this is 75% of the project amount. And the grant, it's kind of a, yeah, 75%. And we're responsible for 25% is the short answer. Yeah, that's it. Sorry, I'm not going to ramble on. Other, other questions about? Okay. Yeah.
We're on 153.
153, yes.
Yeah, just, I just noticed, sorry, the resolution, the number, it says 1,669,91. And then it looks like the quote from Kyle is 961.
The resolution number reads 961.
961 is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I can just also note that this project, we did get an extension on it from August 30th. And our extension will, will go to September 31st. So this work has to be done before the new year. So fingers crossed for good weather. Do you have other questions? May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 153-2022?
Shall move.
Sorry. Okay, let's do a, let's do a roll call, thanks, Cindy, please.
Sure. Councilwoman Lambert? Yes. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stigman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Or no?
Yes. All right, moving on. Resolution number 154-20-22. This is a resolution to award the bid received for the project titled Tropical Storm Ida Restoration Project for various roadways to Earl Asphalt Company in an amount not to exceed $660,717.13. This is to fund our various roadway projects as the, as the resolution lays out, things like Washington Street and, oh gosh, I forgot off the list, but. So this will, this will cover repairs to Aronan Avenue, Corrie Street, Upper York Street, Washington Street, Grant's Alley, South Franklin Street, Leaden, Blair Track, Stryker, Northfield Court, Aloy Track, Lambert Lane, Coriel Street, Stuck Street, South Union, Swan and Wilson Hancock Street. And we'll also fold in some traffic control, uh, repairs as well. So there's a lot, a lot of street and road work to be done. A lot of that's little, you know, minor repairs, but some of it's pretty substantial. So that's what, that's what covered in this, this, this resolution. This will be funded by a grant from FEMA at a percentage of 90%. City will pay 10% of this. Are there any questions? Yes?
You know, Mayor, when we start this work, will we be, will we have the opportunity at that point to do some type of examination of the storm drains that are on, if, through this area? I know that there's going to be repairs of some areas where they actually had some connect. But just to give it, give those pipes just a health check that were up there to see if it's any impacting cleaning that may need to be done.
Sure. So, yes, the catch basin repairs will be, will be done. And there are a number of catch basin repairs in this, in this resolution or as part of this grant. And then there are a lot of catch basins, well, not a lot, probably, I can think of five or six that need repairs that are unrelated to Ida. And I have scheduled for the Department of Public Works, which is unfortunately short-stopped at the moment to do those, those repairs the third week of September. I've cleared my calendar. It's going to get done. If you have to go out and help, help Lester myself, right? So, so, so the basic repairs and catch basins will be done third week of September. If they're not Ida related, if they are Ida related, they will be folded into this, to this work done by girl. I would just note also that the city has our MS4 permit. We are, we are moving to a new tier next year, tier A, which is a much more heavily regulated approach to our stormwater systems. And it's going to be, we're going to be required to be checking our basins. I don't remember how many. So very, regulations are going to get much stricter next year in terms of stormwater management and in terms of stormwater maintenance. And the public should be prepared to have that discussion. We just went to a, a workshop this week. We don't have all the particulars on it. But I fully expect that it's going to require some additional resources on behalf of the city to meet compliance with these increased regulations. We'll be talking about that a little bit this, over the course of this fall, we may need to fold in a little bit of money of budget for somebody to oversee this program, checking the drains and, you know, doing some of the maintenance that we have not been, realistically or honestly kind of doing probably the way we should over the last few years just because of staffing issues.
Yeah. I, I also understand that the LMUA had, maybe still does, one of the, one of the scopes on the end of the wires that they actually, you don't, you wouldn't have to go.
I used it at my house years ago.
So, so as I said, you know, it, the concern we have had with the results of Ida, we will start to address as, hopefully as we go through these reconstructions, just to get an idea of the conditions of the existing drains.
Yes. Yes. I, I, I think we have to do it. I mean, we, you know, we, we saw how much debris was pulled out of the collars for an hour and a half. And, you know, we have not, yeah, yeah, historically maintained this as well as we should. So, yes, on the list. You heard it here.
On the list.
It's on the list. It's a long list, but it's on the list. So I think that we're, are there any questions about this resolution? Right. Hearing none, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number 154-2022?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Lambert? Yes. I should have just said something wrong. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stigman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
Or no?
Yes. All right. Resolution number 155-2022. A resolution to award the bid received from CMS Construction for the Swan Creek Tribute, Tribute Stabilization and Restoration Project and Tropical Storm Ida Restoration Project for Swan Creek and Corrie Street in an amount not to exceed $282,140. This is the joint project that we're working on with West Amwell. This, this represents our share of the work. As you probably, most, most of you know, the damage did not, does not respect municipal property lines. So, you know, there was damage from the West End Rock Town Lambertville Road down through Corrie Street and along the creek. So working with the mayor of West Amwell and their engineering team, we, we did this project together and we're each paying our respective shares. West Amwell did award their, their portion of this to CMS Construction on the 18th?
24th.
24th, thank you, Cindy. So we're here to get this started and we're in a nice way with West Amwell. So any questions about this? And I would just note that, you know, this 282,140, that amount will be pulled out into different, you know, different grants. So some of that is FEMA money, some of that will be USDA money. So I don't have that, I don't, I don't have the specific portions tonight, but we'll have, we can have that available for you very soon.
Could you? Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna, I just noted that the, the other two bids were significantly higher. So what's with that? I mean, like, are we?
Scotty.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I, I, it was, I'm not sure. West Amwell's worked with this company before. They're, they're, they're well recommended. I, I don't know why the bid is the way it is, but we're, we're happy to take it.
Yeah.
So.
And so, I mean, I just want to make sure we're not cheaping this out, right? We're doing the right thing.
Yeah, well, we.
We're using appropriate materials.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
The right place, you know, the right.
Suburban, that's the vendors.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, when you see a difference like this, you always kind of, that's the thing you jump to is, are we just lowballing? You know, are we lowballing this by having inferior process or, or materials? And, you know, I think given what we went through last year, we don't want to find ourselves quickly in that position.
It's a good point. I understand it, but yes, Councilman's right, suburban does vet these that, you know, everything will be done to their specifications. And, and, you know, one of these bids came in $150,000 higher than the estimate. And this one I think probably can't come lower than the estimate. So I, you know, can't explain, can't explain specifically, but everything will be constructed to, to the engineering specifications. And, and it's not a long stretch of road, right? Our section of the road is, I don't know how long it is, it may be only 50 feet, right? So.
Very small portion.
Yeah. So, so, so that's part of it as well.
Okay. So, so Mayor, this, this particular funding for this project, does this, does, does this include the part of Swan Creek that goes past the fire, the, the hibernia? Was it?
Yeah, we just funded that. Yeah, it's just that one section kind of on the east side of the DPW.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, for all the barricades are.
Correct. Correct. All right. We have a motion to adopt resolution number 155-2022, please.
So move.
Second.
All right, so please.
Councilwoman Lambert? Yes. Councilman Sanders?
Yes.
Councilman Stigman?
Yes.
Council President Taylor?
Yes.
No.
Yes. All right. Good, good stuff. I'm looking forward to getting all this work done. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. At this time, we have some spaces, we have a couple of space, we have one space on the Parks and Recreation Commission. And there are a couple of spots on the library board. So if anybody in the room or on Zoom or in the public is interested, please send me an email. As, as people know, when we turn over the new year, there will be some, some available spots on the boards and commissions. Some people will step off boards and commissions, other people will be joining. And so we're looking for anybody who's interested in joining any of the boards or commissions and find a complete list on the city website.
Yes.
Okay, great. Actually, we will ask, and we'll, we'll correct this. You can actually send an email to Councilwoman Lambert, Councilwoman Lambert.
Lambertville and J dot O R G.
So the Councilwoman was exceptionally helpful last year while I was transitioning through beyond the election into, into my new role with helping us fill those, fill those vacant seats that came up on, on the boards and commissions. So she's graciously volunteered to do it again. So that means for all eternity it's hers.
But I've already got the spreadsheet set up.
That's right.
No problem. I'll buy something now, it's fine there.
I can send it back to you. We love a good spreadsheet at City Hall, don't we, Cindy?
Me too.
We love my spreadsheets. Oh, gosh.
Some of them are 100% top.
Gosh. All right. So moving on to discussion items, these are not going to be so much discussions tonight. The Delaware and Raritan Canal Watch Project, the gentleman who presented last, last time, Michael and Jim, were kind enough to stop up at office hours yesterday and, and deliver some, some maps to the council with, for, with proposed locations, the prospective locations for the Canal Watch Project upon Fawson Property. So we're going to take some time as a council to look at these. We're not going to discuss them tonight because it's, at least two, three towns of people have not had a chance to review these today. So we're going to say thank you very much and we're going to kick the can down the road a little bit and talk about it very soon. Unless there's a specific question that anybody has at the moment.
I, I would just like to add that the, Michael and Jim have been very receptive to alternate sites and providing us with information that I feel that we will be able to make a clearer judgment when time comes, whether this is appropriate for us. Too. But it couldn't happen more cooperative and open minded about requests that we've made to them. So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next is the Fawson Property. We're, we're not going to discuss the Fawson Property tonight and I'll tell you why. This past week, we received a letter from, from Green Acres and, and it turns out that the appraisals that were generated in the spring need to be revised because the appraisers missed, missed a, a specific requirement of the appraisal. So the appraisers appraised the property based on the valuation date when they appraised the property. So in May or June of this year, they were directed to, to consider the, the value for the property as of the contract date, which was December 2nd, 2020. So what the appraisers are going to have to go back and do is we recalibrate their appraisals based on the market value of the open space portion of the Fawson Property on December 2, 2020. So that will happen. I don't know if it's going to take one month or a couple of months. We will report back to the residents and I'll certainly speak to council as soon as I have that information in. Just one of those things that somebody, two people, two, both appraisers missed it. We sent them all the information. We have a record of what we sent them. So we know that it was just a mistake on behalf of both the appraisers. It needs to be corrected before the council can consider moving forward with preservation options on the property. Are there any questions about that from the council?
So the way I understand you, the, the request went out to two separate appraising, appraising companies with a request for using the December 2020 date.
Yes.
Right? And they both mistakenly used the current date of the request.
They used the current data when, when they went out to, to the appraisals.
So whatever dated.
Yeah, I was out there in the spring. I don't remember.
So whatever date it visited the property was the date they.
Yeah.
It's, it's odd that they would both make that mistake.
Well, we haven't contacted them, but, you know, I'll just review this as, as a matter of, for the public record. So, so Cindy sent me a list of all of the correspondence. So in March 26 of 2021, she wrote to the director of the Green Acres notifying her of the city's intent to file for, to apply for Green Acres. May 2021, Jacklin Milton provided the city with the name of the two appraisers listed on their approved list. May, May 20 of 21, Cindy sent the both an email to Norman Goldberg and Richard Carabelli asking for quotes. Included the pre-appraisal, fact sheet and exception area map. So that's really, they had, they were given the information. So, that's really, they had, they were given the information of May twenty of the twenty twenty-one by Cindy. So, they just kind of.
It was like, it was, it didn't, it didn't stand out, though, because there was their cover letter, and then there was an attachment, and the attachment, you really have to rethrow it. It was not something that jumped out.
So.
So, so, excuse me, that's like their normal intake processes for for those types of requests is to do it. Is there like, I would, I guess I supposed that there was a a form you fill out, like to go online and you say, I want you to do an appraisal of X, Y, Z, and here's the documents, and here's the bid, and what's the date, you know, and that they have, that they would ask you questions pertinent to how you want the appraisal. Now, this, all all Green Acres appraisals have to be done in the method prescribed by Green Acres. And so, when you apply for Green Acres funding, you do a preliminary checklist, is what it's called. And so, that was done and sent in, and then then Green Acres came back and says, okay, this is okay. Go ahead and send that out, and we sent that out to the the two appraisers. They have to be certified by Green Acres to actually do the appraisal. And so, then we, first, we solicited for the quotes so we could get the money and the budget. And then we sent the, they came back to us with a letter with the second page gave the requirements, which were sent to them both. If this is kind of a different process than what we've done before. Typically, you go through the process, you decide, you know, the the value of the property. There's appraisal done at the beginning. That's my only experience, so I just want to say that. And then, based on those appraisals, that's what, where the purchase price, in this case, it was done from the office. Purchased it, and then we did the appraisal. So, I don't know. I I understand how they missed it because it was two pages. Right? The attachment was at two pages, and the second page is what contained a lot of the information that they were looking for. And they did meet with us, and they did have a lot of questions because they had to come up with the value of the property, but that was not the value of the buildings. It was just the value of the open spaces. So, we met them there. They actually had a couple of conversations with Green Acres themselves. So, it was something that that was missed, and I'm not sure why. I would guess because this is a little different than the. So, are we going to, is there additional cost to us to have this work adjusted?
That I don't know.
I would not.
I would think not. We'll certainly follow up. This just came in a couple of days ago, so we had a chance to really sort of delve into it beyond asking Cindy for kind of a listing of all the correspondence related to the appraisal process. So, you know, I don't know.
And Green Acres said that they reached right out to the appraisers, so we wanted to give them time to get their questions answered before we.
Oh, oh, so they they've already reached out to the appraisers about their oversight. It it seems so interesting that, or interesting is, is two appraisers that were recommended on a list to choose from who have worked with Green Acres would have missed something like this. So, that's just my oversight from what we know so far. So, I would can't go back and, you know, it it's already done this way, but but it it gives us, it just gives me pause to to put confidence in in a, in a, and Cindy is correct about the processes, there have been other processes we've done. But they're the professionals, and to to not know how to do certain things in a form that's supposed to be familiar with is a little disconcerting, but hopefully, they will make it right. And and the most of the work's been done. They just have to do something about the dates and property values. But it is a delay that we did not expect.
Correct.
So.
So, that means then that this Green Acres application is pending, right? It's it's on hold pending these reappraisals.
Correct.
And are we obligated, like, well, you've got the Huntington County Open Space Grant as well, which Jackie Milton raised this on last time. So, are we obligated to move forward with these two grants?
Well, Green Acres is not a grant. It's important to make that distinction.
Well, it's a Green Acres grant.
Oh, sorry. It's actually not, it's actually not a grant. It's a, it's a, I forget the exact term, but Bill, what is it? You know, it's not considered a grant. They're buying part of the, they're buying.
In an acquisition?
It's part, yes, part of it.
It's, there's going to be a conservation easement that goes along with it.
Yes.
Through, because it's being reserved.
But it becomes part of their title, right? So, I mean, it's not, it's not like a grant where you get the money on that, and you just get, you know, it's not memorialized through the.
So. Is, so there's this open space inventory, right? This this parcel of property would put on our open space inventory?
Would be if if it would go on the the roster, that inventory, it would go on there if the city decides to go forward with accepting.
Okay, so I I would hope at some point, we're going to be able to have an open discussion about what's, you know, what our options are. And because I I understand some of this, but, you know, not having worked in municipal government for very long, I don't really understand the nuances as well as some others might. So, I I'd really like that opportunity for the future.
Sure. I I think it's actually pretty straightforward. I think we're not under any obligation now to to do anything, right? I mean, if it turns, correct me if I'm wrong, though, but I think that we have the ability to assess the 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 acquisition of what number from Green Acres and then to make a decision about whether to afford with Green Acres. We have the same right to, we we can just tell Jackie Milton, we don't want her to do it, she doesn't do it, right? So, we have complete control over the process at this point, so.
Also, we have conservation easement would require a resolution of government body for later to execute, so.
So, I'm just trying to understand if there was anything, there was like, I hear, we we always talk about the exclusionary zone, right? Which is where the buildings are located. Does any does, I guess, can we have it as open space but not be part of Green Acres? You know, would we want to do that? Those are the kinds of questions I don't understand that I, if I'm not proposing, we get into the details now. But like, I just would like to hear, be able to kind of guess.
At this, at this point, we can do whatever we want with the property, right?
Okay.
We have, we we have a survey that that delineates the exception area, but it's not part of the D. Right? So, at at this moment, we just have a a survey which has defined the exception area because we would need to do that if we were to pursue open space funding, whether it's Green Acres or another, or some other agency. So, at the moment, the the property continues to be completely under our authority and under our jurisdiction to do whatever we want. And every step of the way, we will be able to make decisions, you know, may, you know, where we were last, the last meeting was, well, maybe we move forward hypothetically. Maybe we move forward with Green Acres only because, you know, we're fairly confident that we're also going to get this match and that we can live with half a million dollars back on the property. And and we wanted this open space, and we're happy to live with the restrictions or the, you know, the things Green Acres requires us to do. Or maybe we don't do either, and we're completely open as to what we do. And they'll all be done right here, right in front of everybody.
Good. I have one more question, sorry. So, if we get this, if we choose to pursue Green Acres and or the Huntington County Open Space funding, and we get, but we say we get one or both, are we, are we are there obligations on how we can spend that money? Like, do we, are we, like, would we be able to put it toward a bond payment, the bond payments on this property?
I believe that the open space, Green Acres would have to go to the bonds, right? We would have to return that. I think we had this kind of conversation earlier in the year with Council President. He did a little research. If we accept Green Acres, when that would go toward repaying the bond.
Okay.
I don't know how the grant, I don't know how the grant would work. I would assume, do you have any sense on that, Bill?
Right, well, that, I just, that's kind of where my head's going.
Well, it it, you know, if we know that the Green Acres would go toward paying off the bond, that that may influence people, right? If we had a choice with a grant, for example, we could decide as a body that we wanted to go toward paying off the, you know, strictly paying off the bond or to to the bond. So, those are decisions that we can go on the way as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, so some, so some of the money that we're going after is 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 much more restricted than other monies that we may be getting, or seems to be much more.
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
I don't know about the grant.
I thought Jackie's comments were that it didn't put additional restrictions on the property. Didn't evolve that.
I would, usually, these grants come with grant requirements that spell out the obligations. So, I think, you know, it'll be important to see that document.
Can I suggest that that when we, as we think about this, for the community as well, is to maybe chart this out a little bit? Not to suggest that we do another spreadsheet, but maybe we need to do it, as far as the sort of the consequences. So, you know, here's the amount of funding, here's where the funding will go, here's how much we produce our, you know, debt obligations of that. Your restrictions that, you know, the, how we grant with Green Acres to just to see the elements or the the consequences of the act.
And we'd be able to put that out there and plug in the numbers when we get the numbers from from Green Acres and or the county market. I think the schedule's a great idea. I think I had a brief conversation in an email about it, not only about this, you know, the process that we're starting to go through with the property. I I know Councilwoman Taylor has brought up multiple times, and we've agreed to do a site plan about it. So, we we've got to start now that we passed, really, today's an anniversary of a really bad thing that happened to the city. And and rightly so, we have had focus to get us back on our feet, and we're we're not there yet. Businesses still have that to be opened. So, it's, there were other priorities now, perhaps we can examine a timeline on the site plan, on the input, how we're going to tune this going forward. It's been on everybody's mind, except we really haven't had the opportunity to focus on on that part of it. And I I think that would be, thank you, would be really very helpful to bring, to bring everybody along with us as we find information out. And we can expand to the asset review of the property that we had just we're starting to work on that. So, is it, so in in my mind, there are, here's, here's, how many things can we handle at once, and how can we get it done efficiently? It's, is a great thing to just get a handle on.
Right, yeah, in response to that, Councilman, I think that, I think that's a good idea. My one, my one thought on this is that, you know, it may not be possible to plug all the numbers in exactly the way, you know, I mean. Right, so, you know, just in wondering about the difference between valuation difference between December sixth, twenty twenty, and, you know, June, whatever it was, twenty twenty-two, you know. I think that, you know, we could potentially work with an estimate, right? So, I mean, we know that there's not going to be a huge swing in market value on that. So, I can do all that, but I would just ask for a little flexibility for the.
We have those appraisals, I imagine it, you know, I'm not sure how they go back in time to value things, but I wouldn't anticipate a huge change, but I, the best information we have, I think, is to.
To your point, I I think we can work the framework, plug the numbers in when we get the real numbers. We can do all the back, the the results of kind of, and just don't plug in any numbers, but just think this is what, this is how we're going to proceed. Just kind of like a a a cliff note kind of thing, where this is the process, we're waiting to, you know, just, we set up the skeleton of it for both projects, then I, I think it will be more prepared, and 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 the residents will be more prepared for how this more, so we'll be more educated ourselves, and the public would be too. I would, I would hesitate from putting any numbers of anything at this point.
Council President Taylor, you've been quiet. Have you got anything to say on this matter?
I'm not, not particularly at the moment. I mean, I share the concerns that we have some questions about what we can do on several of these fronts, but I don't think we have the information in front of us right now to to do much with. So, I guess I'll just leave it at the fact that we do need to figure out how we're going to move forward with the site plan. We do need to find a a way to have reasonable conversations about if, when, and how we move ahead with the Green Acres, and if we weren't going to, what would we do? So, I'm I'm as concerned as the rest of the body about this, but I don't have any particulars to add at the moment.
Thank you. All right, to be continued, then. Just one of the, I know another Fawcett property, the RFEI, the Request for Questions of Interest, that is being released on September sixth on the city website and via the Avenue Newspaper. The received questions are due October twenty-first. The response to the questions will be sent back out by October twenty-fifth, and the final response date is never, never before in twenty twenty-two. So, that.
That's just, that's a great timeline. So, people, so that's, that's the kind of timeline I think that's important. Yes, and Sarah, thank you for sharing.
Sure, and and that'll dovetail with whatever information that we're able to get in terms of restrictions on Green Acres or whatever other information you got on the, the grant, so. Right. Any other points about Fawcett property before we move on?
Last question I have is on the, on the, on the, moving forward on the R.
RFEI.
Yeah. Like the FBI. The, the, when I noticed that there were stakes on, stakes, wooden stakes, not chicken stakes, wooden stakes on the property. Did they mark what the exclusion zones are, as it parts? Yes?
Yeah.
So, when when people come respond to it, we, you know, we drew a map post to that post, and that post to that post, the rest is open space kind of thing.
No, I think that, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think with RFEI, we just put a a map out, a basic map that said, this is the farm market, right? I don't, we didn't, we didn't put markers in the ground. I mean, it's understood that it's part of the exclusion areas of the parking lot.
And so, it's, it it just for an initial contact with us.
Yeah.
Basically, so.
Yeah.
You know, I think that it was a good picture. It was an aerial picture with a square around the reference area. Now, it's a little bit different, yeah, more more defined.
Yeah.
We're going to release, and also, I I think we might have had a line there about site visits that there, there might be a line in the RFEI. There is. Site visits, so city officials can take somebody out there and show them the actual location of what the area, what's good, what's not.
Doing on, these ordinances are currently in draft form. I think we're going to be ready to move forward with a lot of these at our September fifteenth meeting. Just going to highlight them, ordinance to revise the Land of the City of 2014, Chapter twenty, Blood Damage Prevention Incorporated, mandated higher state standards. Having a blood hazard area control. DEP about this, we'll talk about it in greater detail next time. Ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two is an ordinance to revise that they have property ordinance. Again, this, this is amended to, the changes in the legislature requiring notes from Land of the City of the municipal clerk for all foreprogers. Next one will be looking at is ordinance number twenty-four, this is to amend the City Code twenty fourteen, Chapter ten, Section ten, statute seven, rental and housing units. Certificate, certificate of insurance from all owners of rental properties. This is still in draft form, and this will be raised on September fifteen. This is Department of State, right, Cindy? And and we'll need to give it a second. Ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two, the ordinance to authorize and encourage electric vehicle supply, service, mine, EV, SE, and make ready parking spaces. This will be finalized and introduced for procreating at the December fifteenth meeting. We're just doing a little bit of last. just doing a little bit of last uh research on it. It's still, still in draft form. This does not address uh the potential for residents to add EV charging stations on a curb in front of houses. We have at least one in the city which was done by a city council resolution back in 2018. We will look at that process. Councilman Sanders has volunteered graciously to sort of see what other municipalities are doing, where people have, you know, where on-street parking uh and and personal, personally privately owned meters. So uh, it's a tricky one, but I'm not researching it.
It is tricky.
Well, it is tricky, yeah.
Yeah, you, because you don't want, you don't want a patchwork of somebody just one way.
I think it's tricky because it's a street, that's the tricky part. The ones that, what, it's because it's on the city's street.
Correct.
And how do other municipalities regulate the use of it? The ones that come to mind that were put in, was that, was that him's house?
No, Mr. Stone.
No, that's, that's in the alley, that's in the private space.
Right.
There's one on Perry Street.
Perry Street. Mr. Stone.
Southside.
He's not allowed to keep a chair in front of the parking space to save it, right? So he gets his, gets to charge his car when the space is full. So.
Right.
That's right. This isn't something in Boston, you don't get to save your car in our street. All right.
There's a launcher, yeah?
Good one. Um, uh, the next one we will be considering in September is ordinance to amend Lambeth Hill City Code, 2014, Chapter 14, Streets and Sidewalks. I would note that the city does not currently have a provision for a penalty when a property owner does not respond to a request to fix their sidewalk. Uh, we've run into this a couple of times this year. Uh, we talked about this earlier in the year. We had a couple of serious falls in the city from sidewalks that have uh lifts and unevenness. Uh, and we have not yet been successful at getting some people in the city to fix their sidewalks. Uh, many of these ordinance uh will help, will give us a little bit more muscle, will be able to issue a summons and bring it to court, et cetera. We, we certainly.
I did not know that we, I I, somewhere in the back of my mind, I I recall having one where if the city fixes it, they will bill you.
Yes, that that is, that is the current language in the ordinance, but uh I I'm in favor of this because the DPW just doesn't have time to go around fixing sidewalks. It's, uh, you know, pulling out a section and laying concrete, the tools that are involved, billing people. So this is a little bit of a shortcut.
Well, it's not a bad idea. Uh, I, because I know there was something in place, but it requires students, DPW either do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Or let's hire it out to do it and then that may perhaps not get paid, so.
Right, or, yeah, I think it's a, I think given our staffing levels of DPW, it's not a real deal. I mean, we're fairly able to kind of cover all the maintenance fees throughout the year, whether it's storm drains or or anything else, having to repair sidewalks is one thing I do not want to sound with DPW with, we can avoid it. Um, so that will come in September, I mean, September.
It's a good motivator.
Yes. Uh, let's see, announcements into the record, convenience center hours, Saturday, September 10th, 2022, from nine to noon. September 12th, 21st, three to five, September 24th, from nine to noon, four times in, in, in October, October 1st, from nine to noon, October 15th, from nine to noon, October 19th, three to five, and October 29th, from nine to noon. I will just say in regards to leaves and brush, uh, I've asked the Department of Public Works to start keeping a record in September and October of how many pickups they're doing and how many drop-offs happen at the DPW sites. Before COVID, apparently it was only a drop-off. Uh, I guess it was during COVID when we started picking up bags of leaves of people's property according to last year. Is that, is that wrong? Okay, that may not be completely accurate, um, but it's become in my mind a bit of an issue because, uh, you know, we've got the truck going out every afternoon picking up leaves all over town. It's taking a long time. So at some point, we're going to need to address how we can handle leaves and brush in the city, um, whether it's increasing staffing for an hour or two in the afternoon to actually get around and pick up all the leaves. I mean, everybody sees the bags of leaves all over the city and uh we do get a lot of people who do drop off their own leaves and brush. But at some point, we need to make sure that we're making the best use of our staff and and handling this efficiently. So it's something I'm going to be looking at. Um, I know it sounds exciting, but.
Well, it's storm, in some ways, stormwater management as well.
Yes.
Because if the leaves don't get picked up, they go into the system, tweets.
Yeah.
Right. Pieces of eight.
Electronics recycling, uh, Saturday, November 19th, from 10 to 1 at the American Legion, 320 North Union Street. Don't miss it. No migraines. And the County Bridge Y, number Y dash 41, this is the bridge located on Route 518 in Lambeth Hill, just east of Curly Lane, two tenths of a mile west of Swan Street. Westbound lane will be closed traffic beginning uh September 6th, 2022. The road will be passable in both directions with a new traffic pattern, um, which has suffered some damage, I think, during Ida, as pointed out to me, soon after Ida, residents who go on Curly Lane call the county and they've been, so stopping down occasionally over the course of the year, but apparently they're, they're now scheduled to work and have a parish league name. Uh, it's a beautiful bridge. If you look at it from Curly Lane, it's really spectacularly beautiful bridge, the stonework, the arch, it's a very lovely, uh, very lovely bit of architecture that just makes a little bit of TLC. Yes.
Are they going to repair it or restore it? Meaning, it's a lovely bridge now. Is there, is it not, is it going to be like a metal guardrail like we wound up here, replaced through a past flooding incident?
I'm going to be mindful of speaking in public on the record and say that they're doing a lovely job. Thank you, county. I I don't know, you can swing by if it doesn't look good to you, uh, you know.
Well, no, I mean, they go, they want to engineer it and it would be nice if the city would have some input so it doesn't look like every other bridge can, they're going to secure it.
Yeah, they're going to secure it. I mean, I haven't actually spoken to them about it. I have looked at the bridge and I I think what they're going to do, if I'm not mistaken, you know, there are some loose stones. It looks like they're going to be doing some, you know, refitting of stones and do some, what's the word?
Repointing.
Repointing, thank you. Um, process, Councilman Sanders, uh, some repointing. So, uh, I I mean, if you want specifics about the repair job, I'm sure Cindy would be happy to come and buy that for you.
Well.
All right, we'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Thank, thank you for.
For sure.
That's great to hear.
All right. Uh, at this point, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public. It's our turn to sit quietly and you get an opportunity to speak. I would just remind the public that we do have a few rules that we uh, we ask you to.
Don't need to hear.
What's that?
Don't need to hear.
Well, you do need to hear them because I like to make sure that they're consistently applied, uh, so that we're always, uh, the chair will ask, well, so members of the public shall provide comments from the designated podium. You have, uh, we ask you to state your name and address. You have three minutes to make uninterrupted remarks and or questions, and we may or may not respond. So other members of the public wish to speak. Yes, please.
Judy, John Hinchek, 99 Quarry Street, Lambeth Hill, New Jersey. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to speak before this board. Uh, our property, which was originally owned by the Pickcock family, um, in 1705, who built the mill on Curly Lane, um, had built a series of walls between the uh real property and the streambed to uh stream line the bed. Uh, those walls collapsed during Ida. The Department of Interior recognizes uh buildings, structures, and sites when we begin to look at the elements that go into a national registered property. Uh, no attempt was made to contact us relative to the three walls that collapsed, 200 feet long, which are entirely left off of any restoration whatsoever, which means we have open soil between us and the streambed. And our collapsed wall is laying in the streambed and very visible from the bridge over to Rock Creek Woods. Now, this comes from two people who spent three meetings in West Stammwell, making them mindful, probably spoke the wrong language, that there was deadfall in the stream that would impact us in the event we had maybe an Ida, but we weren't on top of the future. That being the case, um, I see from the plans that we received, again, there's no, um, no work going to be done behind our property whatsoever, um, to help restore that, which means again, erosion, et cetera, will take its toll till we have maybe a serious problem. Uh, first of all, a letter of protest, I I just, FEMA goes head over tails to to take care of historic properties. And why that again was left off, I have no idea. Perhaps others here do, but I will say this much, we need help. And even some use of your stream encroachment permit so that we can get at our own expense again, people into the streambed and try to move our stone walls. We're not going to expect drywall to go all three deep, but something can be done, even if it's just to push this, the stones back up again. So it would be the, to get covered under your stream encroachment permit so that we can uh hire someone to go in and do the work. Now, we did hire people to clean up behind our house. I'm mindful that there was going to be a cleanup and we're able to get a lot of wood out of there and so on and that what what the guys could handle by by hand. Um, but like everybody else here, we're living on pensions. And they have to dip into your savings to do what I see as failure for the government to take care of its responsibility. It's something you're asking too much of an individual and their family to bear. As for the other issue which I have a problem with, it goes back to, hate to say, John Adams. The standard for the speaking is clear and present danger. I've never seen it close to that here. And why would everybody ever put something with a limitation on the right to speak in a public meeting goes far beyond what I put the uniform of the United States Navy on to defend the Constitution against enemies. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Hinchek. Your objection is noted on that. And I would just note further that this is the first time hearing in eight months about the, about your property. I'm happy to come out and have a conversation with you about it. Uh, plans were sent out. Uh, it's not FEMA that's doing the work, it's the.
It wasn't the.
I'm happy to have a conversation with you. I'm just responding to your point. You're more than welcome to make a call. I, you know, I've always made time for you. So let's talk about this offline, but I just wanted, I just want to note for the record that the USDA is that the grant, the grant that's being done to do the stream work is not FEMA, it's the USDA. And part of their requirements are, they do have requirements, uh, they, one of their, one of the principal sort of designating factors of the, whether they'll do work is 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 it within 50 feet of infrastructure, that kind of thing. So I'm happy to have a conversation with you about it, uh, but uh I have not heard about this issue before tonight. So, thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't know about it until I received the site plan from you when you emailed it to me. It wasn't gone over with me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other members of the public, thank you.
Sandy Hannah, 240 minutes, South Franklin. Um, I just want to say I really appreciate all the comments that were made about the Ida flood. And I agree that it really brought the city together. I would also like, and I like it that there was unanimous agreement of the fact that stormwater mitigation should be a priority. I would like to request or ask that you communicate that to your zoning board too, as they consider development in south part of town along steep slope and supposedly low density single-family homes. I would like them to have as much concern as you have stated uh tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Do we have anybody online? Would you know, come if you're online, please, for the.
Five on.
All right, uh, so the public participation is finished. May I have a motion to close the public comment period?
Someone, say.
On favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. And um, at this time, the council will like to go into closed session. Um, we'll manage potential contracts. Uh, we will leave the meeting and we're done. I'm not sure how long that's going to take. Uh, so.
Do we anticipate action?
Yeah, we, we don't anticipate any further action being done in the public section of the public portion of the meeting when we come back out of the club. So, uh, we'll probably all find out what's going on.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, everybody.